The RONB Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Falls of 1975 and the New Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying in retrospect as well as posting notices in the Barrow Hall, RONB Post Office, Mary Hold School, Align Banglin School, Gray's Downing School, and the RONB Public School District website. Do please rise and join me in the public legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call board members.
Ms. Derrick.
Here.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Lego.
Here.
Ms. Penzarella.
Here.
Ms. Sams.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Walden.
Here.
Ms. Forman.
Also present Mark Ainucci Superintendent, Dr. Shaw McCarron Business Administrator, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Jade Yezzi Principal of Banglin and Downing School, Mr. Steve Peely Principal of Volk School, Mr. Steve Maloney Vice Principal of Volk School, and Ms. Gladys Hubbert Director of Special Education. Mr. Heinz is on vacation at this time. So moving along, we need an approval of minutes for our regular meeting on July 20th. All right, I got you. Motion made by CHAS, seconded by Maria, and if we can all just be cognizant of Maria, and if she bangs, she's not being rude, she just is, does not have her voice. All right. So I have a motion made by CHAS, seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
I'm staying. I wasn't here.
So we need to at this time have a discussion, the development of the Board of Education goals which are here. We previously have, we previously approved Mr. Ainucci's goals and district goals, but we wanted to, you know, we always have our own board goals, and so there was three goals here, other communication, board member education, and safety and security. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to add to these goals for us? They, essentially, they look this almost similar to what was last year because we think that these three areas, I think I'm speaking for all of us when I say that, the communication and our continuing education and safety and security are our top priorities, I think if we had to come up with three areas. The only other thing I would like to add, when I looked through this real quick a few minutes ago, was maybe in goal number two, if we can add a fourth bullet there, to put something in regards to the extra, like I know that Naomi is always like, has for years and years been a New Jersey School Board Association representative for us, and CHAS with the Camden County Ed Services Commission, I did that many years ago, so I know Maria is always like a liaison that goes to like board meetings, and CHAS would also go to planning boards, like I think that we need to reevaluate that, so if we could put something in goal number two. I know that we have up there about, number one is effective communication and involvement within the community, but I think that it's important that we're represented. Patty, I'm sorry, I wasn't being disrespectful, we got Barbie, the ROI, we got a police officer, we got you and the Women's Club, I guess really it's just me, who has to step in? I mean, I do the BFW, does that count?
Participating ladies only within communities.
Yeah, 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 like something like in the community organization, it probably goes under one, but I just thought that, to me, that's like part of growing as a board member, is knowing like what's going on.
Sprite to call.
You've got one?
I need Sprite to call.
Fine, I know, I know. So if I may, I would go under number one, but I just think that when I looked at all of them, that was like the only thing that was missing out. You guys agree?
I agree.
Okay. So, Dr. McCarron, I don't really care where you put it, because it falls under one, I guess. You still, go ahead. It's a combination of one and two.
Because you're representing a school board by participating as ladies only within the community organization.
Sure.
If you go anywhere.
Yeah, you go, I know. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to add or delete?
I think we've all done pretty well in trying to earn our continuing education credits.
And it's still very easy to-
It's still very good to keep going.
It's still very easy to do that too, because they have a ton of virtual options, like a ton, and they're not long, it just sometimes, like if you work full-time, the hours thing, you know what I mean? But, maybe you could tell that, so this is a school board, it's a church board.
I'm trying to save this, I think it's at 2:00 in the afternoon.
I know, I know.
I think it really should be flagged under one, because everything we talked about and everything we've done, it's lost. I think that's perfect.
Okay. So we'll put it under number one then, Dr. McCarron. That was really the only, the only, the only thing I thought was missing. Yeah? Okay. Anything else? Dr. McCarron, Mr. Ainucci, anything else that you guys want to add to this? Okay, so do we, do we have this as an agenda item?
We do not.
So where would we put this?
Policy.
Policy, so for policy and public relations, we'll add a number six. Approve board goals 21, 22. Okay?
There you go.
You go with that? All right, awesome. Anyone else have any, anything?
I think our, our direct communication, Ms. Ainucci this year, has been incredible. I like to say I keep that goal up too, that's been wonderful. We have weekly updates, I think that's a wonderful thing that we know what's going on day to day, so I think that's a goal we can keep working on too.
Yeah, well, that's one of his, that's one of his goals, these are our goals.
Yes, but I think we, that's still something we are-
Our goal for our CUSAC points is when I start talking everyone in April, May, is just to evaluate the superintendent promptly each year.
Sure.
And we've been doing a good job on that the last few years too, like we've really been, all of us have really been doing our parts. And we did, some of us didn't even need any help with the computer this year, so. All right, so then we'll add that, that'll be number six, so when I ask for a motion under policy and public relations, the sixth item will be approve 21, 22 board goals. Like I said, we already approved Mr. Ainucci's goals and the district goals at a previous meeting. Okay? Barbie, you good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, at this time, we are open for public comments. This public comment is on agenda items only, so if you have any comments that is listed or any questions before we go on and approve anything that is on this agenda, tell me the time that you ask. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve any problems and/or complaints through initial contact with a staff member or members involved therein, and then the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should also only be, excuse me, should only be brought to the board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to topics to be addressed on this agenda only, so it doesn't have to be a complaint, it could be a question, and limited to three minutes in length. I will, if you have a question, you can raise your hand, and I will call on you and just state your name and full address before, for the board before you make your comment. At this time, does anybody have any comments on the agenda items? No? Okay. So, superintendents, report.
We will pick up reports again for everyone in September, so I should do a couple things. As we talk about July, information's going to be sent out to families this coming week, actually starting tomorrow, this is the information from myself, and follow-up through the principals on Thursday, and that'll be regarding anticipated school schedules, expectations, and other guidance. We are seeing staff back in their schools safely and efficiently.
Two seats. I'm sorry, I wanted them to have two seats, so I asked Mr. Maloney.
At this time of the conference, we ensure full-time in-person instruction, five days a week, that's our main goal, to get these kids, to get our staff back in the buildings for in-person instruction, full-time. So you'll see this statement come out, will be similar hours with the war of 2019, before we had the shits last year, so that's our top goal. Obviously, we still have several things to do before that happens, and it's the rest of the next three weeks, information will be shared through September 7th, which is the first day for students. There is some changes with our food service program, the last day for that will be tomorrow, and then we will ship over to the public at that area. That information will be sent out, all parents will be filling out a weekly form if their students, if their children want breakfast and lunch, and that will be done here at the schools. Let's see, one other thing to share, before and after care applications were posted on Monday, I believe we already had some trip plans for that, correct? There'll be no cost for breakfast and lunch during 21, 22 school year, so we encourage anyone who needs it, please fill out that information out. Home and teacher will be available through real-time parent portal on Monday, August 23rd, by 3:00. We're going to also ask parents to fill out some information on that parent portal, updated. Instead of, I know that I was teaching here, and building principal, vice principal, anything else, we send them a stack of papers that first way to school, and color coded, and anything else, now through the parent portal, you can update all that information. So if you change your cellphone number, if grandma, if your emergency contact moved, if you switch doctors, or anything like that, that all can be housed in the computer, it's easier for parents to house, and save, again, saves our, our staff here organizing a lot of stuff in the beginning of the year, lets them do other things we started this school year. And again, if there's any information that parents have questions on, we encourage anyone to just call the school, it's their separate, we'd more than happy to help them out. What else am I adjusting?
After-school barbecue.
After-school barbecue is on Wednesday, September 1st, that'll be 5:30 to 7:00, we're going to move it up a little bit. So far, I have confirmations from, I believe, 10 out of 11 organizations we had last time here, including the, you know, Women's Club, the municipal alliance, the Green Team, I believe, Reimagine RONB is also involved with us, the Boy Scouts will be here, Girl Scouts, Cross County Connection with that state through the school, maybe a great asset to this last time, the Lee's Home from the Library will be here, we're going to help out with the, we have, we have contact, the Rotary is also going to participate, so we look forward to having a nice, you know, a nice night for that. We're going to adjust a little bit of things where I think we'll have some food package stuff, a lot of food things, people are, you know, people keep their lives moving and that, so we are excited about that. And again, we're still, you know, weekly updates with the county office and following, you know, some of the regulations and, you know, any states that, that were in guidance. I don't know how to go, then I'll speak to Captain Murray regarding parking, send that parking letter out, that has been a problem the last couple years, it's been pretty good, just to kind of keep the traffic flood moving, but we're excited to get back to a, quote-unquote, normal, as possible, start for the school year, after last year, which is very trying, and we all understand that. But thank the board for supporting the administrative team and the staff throughout the rest, we once were getting now 18, without the collaborative effort with the board, the parents, the staff, I've heard all our stories from other districts and things that have happened, I think all, I think we've done a good job of supporting our students and educating, and we look forward to getting back in classroom full-time. I believe that's all I have for it tonight. Back-to-school lights, we did shift a couple things around that, we're going to push that back a little bit, I think originally we'd set it out for that third week in September, I think we're going to push that back into, excuse me, the second week, we're going to push it back into the third week of September, I think the 22nd will be for Banglin and Downing, and then 23rd will be where it holds. Again, information gets sent out to the parents, we have, we need some, right now, we plan on having in-person back-to-school light, should something change, or if we need to show some type of other format, we'll let you know. Do you have any questions for me?
Just want to hear, I mentioned the motivation, motivation speaker.
Motivational speaker.
Oh, motivational speaker, yeah, we met actually with him, Mr. Mike the motivator, Ms. Yezzi. Ms. Yezzi who motivates us all the time in our meetings, she found somebody, we met him this morning, if I had a tenth of his energy, and that was just over the computer we met, he's going to meet with our staff on September 1st, right away, I'll kind of kick off with that. Rather than hear Dr. McCarron lay out, he's mad for the language arts series, for our staff to, you know.
Sure, they look forward to hearing it.
So we're excited to have him, and looking for some positive feedback, he works a lot in the middle schools, high schools, and colleges, he's from West Philadelphia, he's got a good background story, a lot of how he kind of founded the niche, what his influences were, you know, he wasn't really a big school person, but he connected with somebody who was in high school, and mentored him, and continues to, and he was just a great, I think, kickoff for the school year and kind of get people to that.
All right, any questions for Mr. Ainucci, any other? Dr. McCarron?
In the business office, we're currently in the process of going through auditing, which will take place between now and November, when they will then present the audit to you usually in December or January. All of that's been going well, we are preparing this year for CUSAC under the curriculum umbrella. This year, we do have the STARK Strong Assessment, which is through the Department of Education, it's pretty much, while it's less time, so the students are only going to be testing for 45 minutes to an hour in ELA and math, it's the same setup as the normal testing administration. So the behind-the-scenes doesn't change, and that takes a lot of preparation and setup, especially at the start of the year. However, the administration in the fall is supposed to be much shorter, only taking up a class period, and we are supposed to be receiving the data as a district immediately because it's supposed to help us drive instruction in the classroom. The key word that I'm using in all of that is "supposed to." So we will see how well everything goes, and we are in the process, I'm working with Mr. Pernora right now, making sure that we're set up with student IDs, passwords, and getting all of that set up. So that hopefully we will be administering that starting the third week in September.
So, that's standardized test, third week is September?
Correct.
And that's mandated from the state?
Correct. That was one of the ways that they got their waiver-
Right.
-for not doing NJSLA non-JLS year. So, and that's only grades four through eight, that is not third grade-
Okay.
-because I think they were, since third grade usually doesn't test until the end of their school year, they're only testing four through eight, so it's limited to volts, which is-
Okay, yeah. I have a question. Could you explain food service a little bit for me? I know that you talked, I know that I called you, but since we have parents here, could you explain how that's going to work this year a little bit? I know everything's not set soon, but like, I was asking you questions that I'm sure if I have, other people?
Sure. So the state has stated that we are eligible for seamless summer option throughout the course of the school year, that means we're able to serve food at no cost to every student, regardless, at no charge, regardless of their meal status. So you might have paid for your student for their lunch every single day, should your student choose to get lunch, they can now order lunch at no charge to the family. So that's if they are paid, free, or reduced. A big key component of this is, our meal application still needs to be filled out, and that is posted online if you are eligible for services. Right now, many families are receiving additional funding that they didn't receive before, if they have an EBT card, so if they don't fill out that application, the additional funding that they were receiving on their EBT card will no longer be happening after, I want to say, October 1st was the date that I was told. So we are encouraging families, and we also use those applications many times when we do grant applications, because oftentimes it'll say, what is your framed, reduced population? Often, we need to have a 35% population in order to qualify for grants within the district. Run-A-Me is always run, in the 10 years that I've been here, has always run extremely close in regards to that 35 number, we've been at 32, we've been at 36, it's always on the borderline. So we are encouraging families to fill out the application, and you can tell immediately if you qualify or not, because there is a chart that tells you whether or not you would qualify for free or reduced. In terms of how we're doing meals, this year there are going to be, I want to say there's going to be three meal options versus the five, there will be a hot, and then there will be two other meals that are offered on a daily basis. Instead of doing the cards as we did in the past, it will be an online card that will be filled out, that will be sent home to families, the families will just fill them out for a week, and then that way we know what we're ordering, we know how many meals we're cooking each day. If a student does not fill out the card, we will have grabbing goes that the student would be given a meal if they needed a meal, we just might not have enough meals cooked that are hot meals on that day. Oftentimes, our cafeteria workers are actually filling out the cards with the students if they know that, you know, a student just doesn't come in with a card, so it will be available on the website for our staff members to still assist students as needed. But there will be no charge, the only charge that will be there will be for extras, which will be the snacks, or if a student orders an extra slice of something, that would be the extra charge.
So like if they want snacks, or like ice cream, or chips, or stuff like that, they'll still be for sale?
Correct.
But, anyone can fill out that form and get five lunches for free, regardless of how little or how much money they make?
Not the meal application, the weekly-
Not the meal application, the weekly thing, they get a meal every day.
Correct.
Regardless.
Correct.
Everyone, for the entire school year.
Yes.
Okay. You know that, I just wanted to know, you guys know that, that people that are out in the community? Okay. Remember we used to do the tickets?
So we piloted-
Oh, summer camp, yeah.
We piloted the form in summer camp, so our cafeteria workers were actually able to use the form and see what that form looked like. It will be a very similar form to what we saw in summer camp, where a parent would see Monday through Friday listed, the three meal choices from Monday through Friday, and the parent would just check off, Monday, no meals, Tuesday and Thursday they're getting food, Wednesday and Friday, nothing. If your child's not getting a meal, you don't have to fill anything out. And then you would also just be checking off whether or not your child is getting breakfast.
And will breakfast be like a grabbing go?
In Banglin and Downing, at this point, Ms. Yezzi and I have been having that conversation, at this point, we are going back to what we did before, where breakfast were being delivered to the classrooms at Volks, it is a grabbing go, where the students, when they come in, go to the cafeteria where Ms. Lisa and Ms. Rhonda are, and would be getting their breakfast.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. McCarron?
It's good news.
Thank you, Dr. McCarron. It is good news, you don't have to pack lunches the whole entire school year. That's great news for me. Just make sure there's a salad option. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. All right. So the rest of the reports will resume in September, and, does anyone have anything? I think it's the same for our committee reports as well, there wasn't much going on in the summer.
Just progress, as far as Camden County State Services Commission, I do have one question.
Sure.
I think it came up in either the junior July, or the, are we going to be participating in the game competition conference?
We currently have a new staff member, who's a recent graduate, who's integral in developing their gaming service, and he is going to start like a, in-house, we are going to also seek out some other local schools in the area, so we're not going to join that game specific one, because we weren't-
That's the question.
It's a possibility.
But the issue is-
Right now, he's going to be piloting that kind of in the beginning, and we're going to try to like get those around, so we can see who else is going to be free, because again, not that you have to be in the same school as the other places, but try out what the college restrictions are going to look like, or anything like that, so he's going to do something like that.
But just for parents that haven't been at the board meetings in the last few months, in the state of New Jersey, there is a conference for gamer competitions, high school, and this year they started a junior, and believe it or not, about 10 or 50% of the colleges and universities of the United States are offering scholarships. My son is currently an instructor at West Point, and they have a gamer team at West Point that competes against other universities. So here's something that tends to give me the idea that it's going to happen, we're at a point now where your child, if they're really good at that game, or gaming, they could get themselves a full scholarship to a university.
Don't tell.
I tell my son. Have you seen him play sports in mind?
Stop it, stop it. That's terrible. I'm going to show that to Louie.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So that's good that we actually had a staff member that we hired that was interested in that too.
We interviewed him, he was in a gaming chair.
And also, the gentleman that initiated this whole conference at the university will come out at no cost to kind of help your school put the team together, and help your coach understand, and coaching their big play.
There's a lot of components, it's a whole production, production component, there's a, you know, I need to blend it out, it's like, yeah. It's not just a game component, there's other, it's pretty cool, so. We're looking forward to it, and Mr. Buckhorn, you know I would invite you in, you can press the door.
I'd like to play games.
Can we do a pong, a little pong, is that something we could do?
No, no.
I'm not looking off.
All right, so is that it for unfinished business then? We'll start with new business? We all ready?
Yes.
Okay. So property and transportation, I need a motion to approve item number one, disposal of books.
I'll accept it.
Motion made by Patty.
Okay.
Second by Dennis. Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, the reason why we're having an August meeting, is to approve items numbers one through 20. Motion made by Maria. Second by Dan. Any questions there? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
No one I have to introduce, correct, Ms. Yezzi?
I don't think so.
Okay. Absolutely, yes. What Maria said, there was, there was more alumni hired, so. Under finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through 10.
I'll make that okay.
Motion made by CHAS.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Ms. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under policy and public relations, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through six, we added more goals. Motion made by Maria.
Okay.
Second by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Walden.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, can we go back to property and transportation? You ready? And add number, excuse me, two, for the Run-A-Me Police Department Junior Police Academy
Yes.
Ms. Baldi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So can we go back to property and transportation? You ready? And add number, excuse me, two for the Runnymede Police Department Junior Police Academy to use the bus on Friday to go to Battleship in Jersey.
They thought that the last couple years, Friday. That's when I thought this was a couple, couple weeks ago. He thought it was a fashion, or he was going to get it, so we decided to try it after the day.
So we're going to add that number two. I'm just going to go through a whole another roll call, okay?
It's Patty, Darren, Dennis.
Patty and Dennis. Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Mr. Buckhorn?
Absolutely.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Leigo?
Yes.
Ms. Penzarella? Ms. Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Baldi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we are open to, for public comment. I already read the public comment rules, but I just will remind that all public complaints against a district employee must be made through a specific grievance process. A description of this process may be found in Board of Education Policy File 20167, and it's available upon request in office of the Board Secretary, who is Dr. McCarron. Any individual naming an employee in a complaint before the Board of Education without the employee's permission could be cited for violating that employee's civil and contractual rights. So again, if you have a public comment, please raise your hand away to be called on by me, and then you'll state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to, for your comment.
And also, if you are making a public comment, if you could just make sure that you signed in on the sign-in sheet by the front door, just in case I don't get everything named correctly.
You were firsthand that I saw.
Yep. I wasn't sure if I was going to get up and say anything, but... And I have a lot in my mind that I'd like to say, but I'm going to try to summarize it into, there's really three categories.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'm sorry, we need this for Jessica Farrell, and I live in Runnymede, New Jersey. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay. Like I said, there's three topics that really interest me, and that's the masks, vaccines, and CRT. I'm a grandparent. I'm a proud grandparent of five kids, grandkids. One is 16. She's got a big enough mouth she can take care of herself. The other ones are five, two are five, and two are almost three. Now, and I'm not speaking just about myself, my grandkids, there's a lot of people that I speak to, and this doesn't have anything to do with politics or anything like that. What it has to do for me is that hypocrisy that's going on. I have a lot of material that I could bring forth, but I'm not going to, because I know my time is limited. As you can tell, people tell me that I can tell, I can't tell. I have an accent, so I'm a two-time immigrant. First, I immigrated into Canada, and then I immigrated into the United States. Now, when I saw this picture, this picture here, really, really annoyed me. Because when I saw it first, I had no idea what Lollapalooza was. I thought it was a field of flowers. Then, as I read, I see that it's people, people, right next to each other, over 385,000 people. Okay? No masks, no nothing. And that really irritated me. And, and, and who knows if they're here legally, illegally, whatever. Like I said, I immigrated twice. I had to fly, I was a scar here from, I come from Mary's, a very small town. I had to go to Rome. My parents, we had never been on vacation before. They packed us, all six of us, up, went to Rome. We had to go for a physical, we had to get a vaccine, so we could go to Canada. Now, for Canada, when I met Mary, my husband, I had to go through basically the same ordeal. We talked about four decades upon us. I had to go get, in order for me to get, to come here legally, before I even came in, I had to get my permanent resident alien card, okay? And I had to get a picture of my left ear. Now, I didn't know at the time, but I know now, the supposition, your ear is even more significant than your fingerprint. No, two years are like, they say, not even the same person. Our ears are different. There's a difference in that. I had to go several times, because one time, my hair was blowing over it, whatever. I had to go several times to get this picture taken. Then I also had to go get chest x-rays. On our way over to the airport, the day that we were leaving to come over, I forgot my, my chest x-ray. We had to drive all the way home, pick them up before I was allowed to go on the plane. So I believe in immigration, obviously, but I believe in legal immigration. In, in the sense that everybody's got the right to come in. I mean, we're all, this is a country of immigrants, and I think everybody should have the right to come in. But do it right and do it properly. Now, we've got another thing. Over a month ago, I read that there was over 1.3 million people already since February that had crossed the border without giving any, any physicals, no vaccines, no tests, no nothing. Now, these people are all taken and distributed all over the United States. It's not fair to us. It's not fair to our little kids. And like I said, I'm not talking, and I have one grandchild that's autistic. She's nonverbal. Just within the past month, she sort of started repeating a few words. Now, can you picture, I apologize for getting emotional, but can you imagine her, she's finally, after, she's, she's the one that's five and a half. She's finally starting to make a little bit of progress. Can you imagine her going in school, and the only, the only way that you can get her to repeat you is if you have her look at your lips, she stares at your lips, you say the word, and then she tries to, to imitate what you're saying. Can you picture the little child, and many children like her, in a classroom, not being able to read, to look at the parent, at the teacher's faces, or their, their classroom. And that, there again, I'm not saying that it should be mandatory that there be no masks in class. I just think that, I've always believed that this country is a land of, as the sense is, a land of the free and the home of the brave. And I'm trying to get enough braveness in me to speak up and say what I say, but it is a free country. I think that every person should have the ability and the right to be able to make their own decisions. A parent that want to do it, a parent, or a parent, adults, whoever it is, that want to have their kids in masks, go ahead. Why, parents don't, don't, because another thing that I read was, you know, the masks shouldn't be kept on anymore, they're like maybe changed every 15 minutes. I don't remember the exact code. But can you imagine a child, I mean, I notice all around, people that have masks. And I'm not, and I'm not downing you, but you know, we're constantly touching them. Kids constantly, there's no way that they're going to be able to hold their masks on for 15 minutes. For 15 seconds, let alone 15 minutes. So I like, and, okay, that's a mask, that's immigration, the CRT. And like I said, I'm going to try to squeeze everything in as soon as I can.
I'm just going to ask that, I'm not trying to be rude, but it's been past three minutes.
Can I just briefly say one thing about CRT?
Sure.
Critical race theory. The United States worked, the whole world, we worked so hard, the United States worked so hard to, to, to end the segregation. What we're doing now is we're encouraging people to segregate ourselves again. What the heck, Martin Luther King, I mean, he's, he was probably rolling in his grave right now. Everything that he fought for is being turned around. We can't let that happen. The land of the free and the home of the brave, okay? And we all have to stand up, and we all have to fight. I don't know, Eddie, I'm so confused. I really don't know what your roles are, the school board's role is anymore. I don't know if you guys have any influence, who makes the final decisions. But I think that there's a lot of people out there who feel the same way as I do, and I think that you guys need to be aware of that.
Thank you. Just to, I can answer that question for you, Mrs. Farrell. Last week, when I was doing a lot of reading and such as well, I reached out to our attorney, because I wanted, we wanted to make sure that, to see if we had any type of say over a mandate from the governor. And it is not up to the individual Board of Educations. We can make a policy that, for Runnymede School District, we make policies, that's our job, really, to approve policies, right? But a mandate from the governor trumps any policy that the Runnymede Board of Education has. So despite what some people are saying or putting out on social media, it is not up to individual Board of Educations to get rid of a mask mandate. That our governor gave us, I will say this to you, I will say this to you. It was not our goal, it was not, that was not going to be, I had, we had had many, many meetings and conversations. And that, you know, I will also say that we did reach out to our attorney, and there is nothing that we can do as a local Board of Education. We did that, I promise you that we did that, and because if some, if we don't, if, if there's not masks and a child gets ill, this is the example that she gave us, correct? A child gets ill, we aren't following a mask mandate handed down by our governor, then the school district could get, is liable. And our job is to protect the entire district, and we cannot allow them to be liable. Hold on, please, I just wanted to answer her question. And so that is where we stand. And the minute that it is, becomes, the mandate is lifted, and it becomes optional, it'll be optional on the Runnymede School District as well. So I, so I just wanted to let you know that, because there's a lot of misinformation out about local Board of Educations. And I told everyone who was here in June, I wasn't here, because I had something for my son this month. You can come out here and advocate for your grandchildren and your children as a community member every single month for the rest of your life. I think that's wonderful. We all think that's wonderful. But we don't have any control over a mandate from the governor, and masks will have to be worn until that mandate is lifted. That's sad. It's really sad.
In regards to the critical race theory that has come up, it came up from Ms. Kelly at last month's board meeting. It came, it came up this evening. One thing I will say is, New Jersey School Boards has put out information regarding critical race theory. Oftentimes, the information that's being presented in terms of what critical race theory is and isn't, isn't necessarily always presented from what's being taught in the classroom. So New Jersey School Boards actually outlined everything very nicely, so I will be posting that on the district website this evening.
So, so you can see exactly what the, what the New Jersey School Board said. So when, when you want to look up something, you can look on our website after tomorrow. And Dr. McCarron put some stuff up over the CRT comment. Thank you. Thank you for being brave enough to say.
I feel like I had to.
That's fine.
I apologize.
No, you're not, you don't have to apologize ever. You're an actor, man.
I have a question. I just want to stay a little bit, I want you to talk about.
Sure.
She told me about the mask. Again, I'm going to wear this mask like for 45 minutes. We supply the masks to the students. How many masks do we give them? And do we expect them to wear how many masks during the day? I mean, I don't see how you could wear this entire day. Do we, do they, do we all change, or do they?
Right, exactly.
Do we, we supply them to the students? We, we can't?
There's like disposable ones like this, and then everyone got one of them.
They would have them changed every 15 minutes, if you wanted to follow the CDC's guidelines.
Right, I, I, right.
So every student, every 15 minutes, we got to get their mask changed. I know you know, but if that's, if you want to follow the CDC's guidelines, that's it. Every 15 minutes, you got to change every student's mask. Otherwise, you are inhibiting their health. And I know that's at the bottom of every one of these, these lawyer's claims.
I'm sorry, your name, please?
My name is Chris Farrell, living on 314 Shepherd Avenue, Runnymede.
Thank you.
And I'm at the bottom of all these mandates, whether it's at a store or from the government. It's unless it inhibits your health, it inhibits all of our health. You've been here for more than 15 minutes, you have not changed your masks, you are inhibiting your health. So that's, that's just, is what it is. These masks that we wear, I mean, I don't want to get scientific, but the, the microns, the microns, the size of the particles that this virus that we're so afraid of, these masks do not protect you from that. I know it might make you feel like it's protecting you, but it's not. That's not a medical issue, the mask, that is specified for that purpose. It's not. You're wearing the cloth, you're wearing a paper, everybody's wearing a different mask. These masks do not protect you from this virus that everybody is so afraid of.
But it's dangerous to kids.
It's dangerous to kids. My child personally is experiencing facial tics. Like, you know when you have your glasses and you take your glasses off, but you still poke there, because you think that there's, you're there? So the, the stretching of the skin, because she's so used to having that around her face. She doesn't need a mask. Again, if we're going to follow what the science says, the regular flu is far more harmful to these children than this virus. This virus is for people my mother's age.
Hey!
I'm sorry. These children are not affected by this virus. It's a 0.0084% that one of these children can pass away from this virus. You have a far greater risk to pass away as a child from the standard flu that comes around every year. That just is what it is.
Mr. Farrell, nobody up here is disagreeing.
But why, you said that your lawyer said if one of these children happens to get sick from this mask, blah, 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 blah.
Then we within the district, and our taxpayers would be liable.
But you should be liable for every year leading up to this, because the standard flu is far more harmful to them than this virus.
I guess that's a point that we could take, but when we ask a specific question to her about, because, about, is there anything that we can do? That was our question. That's, and that's the answer that we received, and we have to protect the entire district.
Well, you know what, they say that because they call us unsophisticated people, just because, because we're not lawyers, because we're not this, that, and the other, we don't have tons of degrees. But the average person has brain cells that work and knows the difference, huh? Knows the difference between what is and isn't good. And all these legal people that just, you know, they gave you the answer that you, that they needed to give you to protect yourself.
And the governor took away our, and the governor took away our ability. That was not our plan. I, I, I promise you, our plan was not to, that was not our plan. And the minute that, she's, it's fine, she's fine. Mrs. Farrell, you're fine, and you're fine. It's, it's not, but I'm, what I'm saying is that the governor took the power away from us. It's, it's funny, and I can say this as a school board member, because last year, if you recall, in August, he said, hey, every school district, do what you want. The district next door, their kids only went to school two days a week for the entire year. This district, this, this, last year was up to us, so then this year, it's not. Only the masks. Yes, sir. Your name, please?
Justin Clayton. I live one hour, quarter that, quarter that. I get that.
That's all right.
I, I'm one Blake Brosax, right? So I'm a retired sheriff's officer, so I can vouch for this. When you read these orders, right, they have everything spelled out. All of them get charged with misdemeanors if they come up with, if they come up with something. If they say, oh, 20 minutes, all of them are getting charged, so they can't. We can't have our school, schools where we can't follow.
No, that's already the CDC's guidelines, is that 15 minutes?
No, 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 I know. What I'm saying is the way Murphy wrote this order, is he said, you will be charged with a misdemeanor if you change, if you go against my order. However, question I had is, because we know that you can't be having these things on for very long, can we then go and say, bro, you're footing the bill. Buy my mask for kids. My family can't afford it. We're a middle income town. And I can't afford to send 18 masks a day for two kids. I can't do it. You know, and my boys, I don't want them getting sick for wearing that thing for 20 months. Jackson, who's nose runs all day long, so now he's got this crap on his mask, all that. I can't have that, you know? And then now he's got rash, he might get a rash or whatever. It's like, can we go to the state and say, you give us money? Because you, you're making, you're making us do this, you're making our children wear masks, you got paid for it.
In that situation, they're pointing to the money that's provided through their rescue plan, that they outline what you can use the money for.
So that's, that's built in?
So they're saying?
So they've built that in, and they're saying that that's what that money should be used for, that is what the need is for the district.
Okay, so that's, that's all, let's say.
That's exactly what they would come back with.
So like, if Mr. Clayton, if you called, Ms. Yasi, I think your boys are young, and said like, can you send me a couple boxes of masks? Yes, whatever you want.
So if we can't, if we can't send them in with... That's what I'm saying, like, we can't send them in with a bunch of masks, then the schools will say, oh yeah, here you go.
Well, I mean, I, that's what, as a parent, that's what I did last year. But my son's a lot, I think, I believe, older than your son, because he's going to eighth grade this year. So I did put like 10 clean masks in a bag.
But can we have them supplied? Because I'm, all I'm saying is...
Yes, sir, yes.
If the state's mandating this, and, you know, money, money is money, you know?
No, we, I understand what you're saying, yes. But they did, they, they did give us money, so if you need a mask.
Yeah, and then can we keep going back, saying, hey, all of our parents are asking for these things?
I wrote it down.
All of our parents are asking for this. We can't afford to do this with the money you gave us. Lead them to it. Teach them a lesson. That's what I'm saying.
I, I, I wish I could.
Because that's the only way they're going to learn. They're not going to learn by us standing around going, oh, we want this. Because they're just going to go, whatever, beyond, lead them to it. Pay them for what they're worth.
Thank you. And let us know.
Thank you.
No? Of course.
I can hear you.
Yes, yes.
Hi, Melissa Warner, live on Rambler. My son has health issues, so, you know, I hope, I think that I would want the mask. But just can we get creative? Because last year, we were promised that there was going to be breaks, and he did go for the first half of the year, and I can tell you that there was not breaks. I did see other classrooms going out and was being told that they were outside, and they were not. I did fool him for the second half of the year, but like, we got to be creative if we're going to do the masks. They, they really can't be silent. Like, can we come up with something for the desks, if they can take them off during that time? Or can we put some of the classes outside? Or can we put some of the classes outside? I mean, we do have the first half of the year and the second half of the year that is mainly nice. Like, we have to get creative so these kids can have breaks. I mean, my kid's used to wearing a mask. We have lived in the hospital. It's normal for us, okay? I hate it. You know what I mean? So he knows, and he's just going to do it. But it sucks when my kid gets up to throw something in the trash can, just like any other kid in a normal school year, and realize, oh crap, you can't do that, and got in trouble for it. We got to come up with something for these kids where, yes, we're trying to make it normal, but that we have this outside time. I mean, gym class, every, like, I mean, just anything to be outside and not have the mask on, where they can be distance. And now that, you know, the distance has changed from six to three, I mean, what can we do in the classroom that, depending on how many kids are in the class, if they can be spaced, that maybe at their desk they can have it down? There are other districts that have been doing that.
That's a great question, and I'm going to ask our admin team, who is all here to, to think about that the next couple of weeks before school starts.
So is that, like, my son has a nurse that goes to school with him, okay? So like, you know, when you want to count how many students are in a class, and you're going to add her in, you know, when they're all seated, they could have their mask down. You know, I mean, at that time it was all high, it was brand new. But I definitely think there's creative ways, and maybe, you know, I don't know, all of his parents can think of something and, you know, see what everybody thinks. If there's something that's not comfortable with it, that's understandable, you know? But instead of like, there's, you know, other things going on that, you know, COVID testing and not really telling parents that are happening, I don't know if it's happening here, I'm just saying. But like, that's not fair either if some parents don't want a mask on their kid, and then that kid is being singled out, you know? Um, so I just think that there's some other ways that we can get the kids outside. I don't really care if my kid's sitting in the parking lot. I mean, I'm.
I don't either.
You know, he wears a mask all the time. Like, we, we go to the hospital a lot, you know, so it's normal for us, but I, you know, I don't want it for him in school. And he can get sick, and he gets sick very easily. So, um, I just think that there's some other things that we could probably come up with. But it'd be great if at their desk they could have it down. You know, I know there's cost of money to have whatever, the stupid list.
Barrier.
You know, barrier things. I'm not saying that, but I mean, like, I don't know, something, something creative.
Your question has been noted, and we will get back to you. Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right. Sure, get it.
That's really, has been a great principle.
We know.
I didn't sign in, but I have a question. I think most of you know me.
You better sign in on the way out.
I know, I was like, I did some.
Sure.
Jessica Marchese. I'm just really here for support and just kind of gain, gain some clarity of what's going on in surrounding town, stuff from Blossom Township. Um, so I just have a question for you. What is, because I understand your positioning now where kids, you know, you could be liable. What happens when 50 kids show up on the first day of school without a mask? Because it inhibits their health. What are you going to do?
Well, I'll be at school. I won't be here. Well, I'll, I'll ask them.
Because as a parent, I know I do not consent to my child's face being covered, and she has a medical condition where she cannot wear it. So what is the other option?
Would you ask any parent to provide documentation from a doctor?
So is that a policy of yours? Because that's not in the document.
We have to.
It's not in there? It doesn't say anything about having a medical move?
I have to double check that.
Okay.
We'll have to figure that out in the next couple of weeks.
And then my other question is, what would the quarantine rules then be? Would the kids have, if they were exposed to somebody who tested positive in the classroom, let's just say my daughter, would she then have to be out of school for two weeks? And then in that case, what happens during those two weeks?
Quarantine rules would still be in effect, and the school district would be responsible for home destruction, against towards home destruction. We actually talked about that earlier today. We're a bit like similar to last year, where your daughter would then zoom into the classroom with her peers. Uh, but we can't offer that all remote option like we did last year. That would be the only time.
But during quarantine, it might happen, they have to.
So that's the exception?
Yeah, only exception.
Okay, yeah, because in the governor's order, it says that remote learning is not a good.
Correct. But it's, but it's the 16th. It's the 16th. Now, all of this is changing every single day.
I'm sorry, the what?
Like, the 17th? Oh, like, no, I'm, yes. I'm like, it's the 18th. Sorry, I just came in from the shore. So, um, like, this is changing, like, ever changing. Like, every, every single day, our admin team needs, like, it's every single day. Going over things, new things, new things. Like, our kids aren't coming in till the 7th. We could be having this meeting right now, and things could be completely different by then.
Right.
Prior to August 6th, we were told that there was no remote learning whatsoever, and accordingly. On August 6th, when everyone else found out that remote learning would be offered in the situation of quarantine only, that was brand new, that was news to us. So as soon as everyone else is hearing, we're then hearing at that very moment also.
So there's also a possibility that they could go back to virtual learning between now and the first day of school too. Boom.
We have no lock here.
On any given day, we could get a message that, you know, it's open to that, it's open to that.
One last question too. Um, do you have a example of a mask that you will be providing to the students on you right now? Do you have them somewhere in the building?
We have a box mask available, somewhere that Ms. Davis or Mrs. Darrow are wearing. We have these masks that are available.
Could we see the box that they made?
Yeah, you'd like to see the box?
I don't have that on me right now.
Are these for children, or for like, the four to eight, like grades? Because I feel like the very small children need specific masks.
And has OSHA permitted all of you to wear your mask?
No. Do you have a question?
No, no.
Do you have a question? Your name?
So, my name's Deanna Chambers. I live in Patrissaline. So, the executive order says that there's an exception if someone can't breathe. But what does that entail? So like, my daughter refuses to wear the mask at this point, and she's saying she can't breathe properly. So what, what does she have to do? Be like, passing out on the ground for it to become an exception? Or how does that work? Because if she's in school and she says, I can't breathe, I'm assuming that she will be allowed to take her mask off.
It says when individuals having trouble breathing is unconscious and passed to otherwise.
So she has to pass out?
I don't think that could pass out. She needs assistance, I'm sure our staff could assist her.
Doesn't that sound a little heavy for a virus that doesn't pose a risk to a child?
But I'm just saying.
That's heavy, man.
It says if they can't breathe, comma, if they're, if they're.
I would suggest.
So that means to me that if they can't breathe, whether they feel as though they can't breathe, or whether they actually cannot breathe, you can't tell a four-year-old or a five-year-old, hey, you can breathe. Like, if they feel like they can't breathe.
I would reach out to your child's school and have that conversation with the principal of the school, so you can provide accommodations.
Okay, because, you know, I, I made requests to the doctor, and the pediatrician at this point is saying that they were told that they are not to give any exceptions unless they, unless a child is severely, like, on the furthest end of like autism, like, so severe, or if they're very, very disabled, where they literally cannot move their hands to take their own mask off, was the only two exceptions.
So who told the pediatricians that? The, the governor?
I have no idea. They said it's their policy that they're not giving any exceptions for any medical reasons, which is a problem to me, for me, because, you know, there's kids that have sensory processing disorders, which, you know, on the spectrum of things may not seem like that big of a deal, but, you know, my daughter won't wear sandals without socks. She won't wear certain pants or shorts. She has, everything has like a comfort level. She refuses to eat any foods that smell. I can't even eat near her if I'm eating something that has a smell to it. So it's like, we're in a world where this is something that like, you know, for her, this is traumatizing to her. You know, for the normal person, I would say, no, okay, the normal person can understand, you know, this is uncomfortable, but you can wear it. But for a four-year-old, how do you say, you can breathe, and it's not uncomfortable? And, you know, so, and if they're not giving exceptions for stuff like this, to me, that should be an exception. And it shouldn't be that a doctor can say, you know, they're giving these higher orders down, where they're not giving any exceptions to, to these kids for, you know, kids with like speech problems. That like, I know that if a kid is already having a difficult time speaking, putting the mask on is silencing a child. They are going to have even a harder time, especially kids that speak quietly. If you have to repeat yourself, then it becomes, you know what? I'm just not going to talk because I don't want to deal with that. So now you're silencing the children, you're making them feel uncomfortable to, to speak. So I just think, you know, there has to be, in the order, a lot of things are very unclear. And I think that the gray area is where we're going to have to live for everybody to feel comfortable and move forward with a normal school year. So if the kid can't breathe, they're going to have to make exceptions where the kids can take the masks off. And like, she said a great point, the three feet desks. If you can go into a restaurant and walk five feet to a table, and then you take your mask off, and everybody around you is eating and drinking, and, you know, you're talking, spitting the food out, and like, whatever, why are these kids forced to sit at a desk? They can sit at a desk and stay there and like have their mask off if they're at a safe distance away, just like at a restaurant. So we need to make these accommodations. We need to make, if we need to small, make the classes smaller and figure it out. That's what I think needs to happen, rather than just being like, oh, we're going to follow the order. You know, if you're an attorney, every attorney knows, there is so much gray area in like any legal document, that there's no way that they can say to you, oh, well, now you're held liable because you let a child breathe, and that was an exception. So like, we have to like get, like she said, creative with what we're doing, I think, and, you know, live in that gray area of the law.
Well, like Mr. I N U T said, you can reach out to your daughter's principal and teacher and try and figure out something. But unfortunately, we're not saying we agree or disagree with you, but as Board of Education members, like, like I said previously, it's okay. There's no local control over, over this.
Is there any way that we could absolve you of any precautions that you would receive from our child? Because it absolutely 100% inhibits my child's health. She's a five-year-old.
I don't believe so, sir. I can, I can always ask.
That would be beautiful.
Did you have something else?
Well, I just, I have, I have a, I have a letter to, to unenroll my child. So it's, I, school's in a couple of weeks, so we're making moves on our end. If, because like I said to you, it inhibits my child's health. I would feel like a terrible parent if I sent her there, okay? If you watched her facial tics, you would agree with me. If things, like I said, right now, we have this letter drafted, and it's, I mean, we were a little targeted at the end of this meeting.
Any other public comment?
I'd like to say something.
Sure, your name?
My name is Nassau Whalen. I'm not actually a president. I've been all along. I've been going to a lot of board meetings because of the fact that we're looking at going to a different district because of the mask mandate. So there are quite a few up, up in North Jersey that are fighting the mandate. A mandate is a mandate, it's not a law. So whatever your attorney is telling you, I think maybe they need to look at it.
We're, we're well aware of all township and everyone else that's, that we're, we're following that very currently.
There's quite a few, anyway. As voted in, because, you know, if you're a school district, what's the point of having a Board of Education if you're not fighting for the kids and the schools? Because I guarantee it, people that are here are going to fight to make sure you keep your jobs. Because that's the fear, that's what you're worried about, lawsuits or whatever it may be. There's so many statistics, there's so many doctors coming out with evidence, it just doesn't make sense anymore. And it is their civil rights. And it, you took constitutional oath to protect them. That's what we need to do, and then in reverse, they're going to protect you. You've got to help these kids. I, and all I've got to say right now is, you guys at least have a board that's siding with you. We've got a board that's looking at us going, sorry, sit down, have a nice day. My daughter has anxiety to the tenth extreme, and nosebleeds. You know, she, she can't talk, she can't breathe, she's got lashes, everything under the, and it just doesn't seem to matter. And I'm hopping around from school to school going, please, somebody say, I commend you guys for saying you're siding with the parents. But everybody's got to stand up and fight. Don't send your kids to school then. Send them to school. We do not consent for the masks. What are you going to do? Send my kid home? And you can't say, go to the nurse because you need a break? That's what they wanted my daughter to do.